I guess we can stand. Everybody can please stand. Wait wants us to stand. I'd like to welcome everybody to this work session. And if you don't mind, I would like to have a moment of silence for the 296, 996 people who died during a very horrific event in America. September 11th, 2001. There was over 6,000 people injured. And I would also like to add that it was the deadliest day for public safety in the history of America, with 343 firefighters dying and 72 law enforcement officers. So if you don't mind, we can just have a moment of silence and remembrance of all of those people who perished during that horrific event. Thank you very much. May God have mercy on his souls. And on that note, we will start off with the work session today. We'll go to page, let me see. No bills for introduction? We wouldn't do that anyway. Fiscal matter contract, starting with page one. Captain Dennis Delp with the Police Department. Yes, come on up, sir. Good afternoon.
Police Department, on behalf of our forensic section of the Barmen County Police Department, forensic section is asking for approval of a contract with RJ Lee Group Incorporated for trace analysis gunshot residue testing. It's a five-year contract not to exceed 183,000. Just a couple of previous years expenditures, just for your information. FY '19, we so far spent $3,350. FY '18, we spent $18,473. And FY '17, $12,844. We've had master agreements with RJ Lee in the past, specifically 2005 to 2009, when we did not have a certified analyst for casework. And in 2017 and '18, we used them for when we had instrument repairs and garage construction. In January 2018, our only analyst resigned. And we had one, it takes one year to train a new one. So that position has been reallocated to our Drug Chemistry Unit. And we've made, did a cost benefit analysis on it. And it basically is more cost effective to outsource this work instead of doing it in-house. The maintenance contract on the equipment is $30,000 to maintain the equipment every year. And consumables for the instrument are at $1,000. So there's only two labs that are co-mor licensed to do GSR in Maryland. And RJ Lee is one of those. And that is the only organization that put in for the bid.
So I take it, thank goodness, that's because we have very little need for analysis? Because of low murder rate in Barmen County?
Fortunately, yes. We haven't utilized them a lot. I have the numbers here. A couple of times a year, we're using them. And if you look at it from a salary standpoint, and you look at the, as far as certifications, it's really not worth it. When you look at it, we've had, in 2016, we had five GSR cases that we sent out for analysis. In 2017, we had 13 cases. And so far, in 2018, we have four that were sent out. So when you do a cost benefit analysis on salaries and on consumables and contract maintenance and all that, it's definitely the way to go for a long-term benefit of contracting that on an as-needed basis.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Captain.
You're welcome.
Lionel, we'll move on to page three. Cleanup contracts. Derelict building lots. Lionel, did you get dressed up for us? Thank you, we certainly appreciate it. It's your professionalism is what we always respect, Lionel.
It's all about, sir. Good afternoon, Council Chair Jones and the rest of the council staff, everyone. I am Lionel Van Damme, and I am here on behalf of PAI, specifically the Code Enforcement Division, requesting approval of four derelict properties contracts. These four contracts are each one-year contracts with four renewals. The total five-year and four-month contract term cannot exceed $2,948,822. These contracts were bid to replace contractors with expiring contracts.
Okay, any questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm excited to see these contract renewals because we have a lot of problem properties, especially in eastern Baltimore County. And is this any additional contractors that we've had prior? Or is it the same amount of contractors?
Yes, there's two, it's the same amount of contractors. We try to carry a contractor load of six to seven contractors at all of time. Currently, Huber, as well as Evergreen, have current contracts with the county.
We know this is an issue across the county, so maybe we could just speed up the process and get any of these buildings knocked in. Thanks.
And I'm under the assumption, in a lot of cases, we recoup some of this money.
Yes, sir. The process is to apply a property maintenance lien against these properties and apply it as a tax lien. We don't recover all of it, we do recover some.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Walsh, page six. Addendum to Lewis Berger. Yesterday, I will say that we presided over the bridge at Woodlawn. And it was a gloomy day. And like five of us showed up, we were all wearing gray suits.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council.
Good day.
The administration is requesting an addendum to a contract with Lewis Berger U.S. Incorporated. They provide one-call program management services for the county's sanitary sewer consent decree compliance. And if you remember, we are still under federal consent order to improve our sewer system, started in 2005. Consent order, if you ever read it, it's still out on the website. There's projects going on throughout the county, tremendous amount of work's being done. These folks provide that high-level oversight and really help us, help our staff manage through the consent decree. There's many, many requirements in that consent decree. Reporting requirements, actual work requirements, notification requirement to the feds, if any of our projects slip in any way, we need a fire letter off to them, let them know why and how long. This vendor has been instrumental in helping us be in compliance with the consent decree. And actually, I was in the room when they actually said we are a model jurisdiction in how we are attacking the consent decree. So this amendment adds three additional years to the term, to the secure term, and would increase the compensation by $13,502,114 from the original $15 million limit, which would bring it to $28,502,114 for the entire nine-year term. Remember, it is a big contract, but it is a big program. It will be a billion-dollar program by the time it's all done. We have projects going out to 2026. This contract amendment will take us out to 2023. And hopefully, at that time, we reassess whether we need the services anymore, or whether we need to go out to bid at that point. We believe it makes sense, at this point, to amend this contract rather than bring a new vendor in and have them get familiar with the consent decree as a whole. So the vendor has been doing a good job, and we think it makes sense to ask for the approval of the amendment at this point.
Councilwoman Quirk?
Yeah, not on this issue, but while we have you here, just real quickly, if I could, before we get on the snow removal, you know, speaking of hurricanes, and you know, I know we're watching it closely in EOC and our fire departments and Jay Ringgold and whole crew. My question, because of this constant rain we seem to be getting, especially in Cadenceville and Oella, as you and Mr. Executive and all know too well. I've been reading some correspondence back and forth with Public Works and different constituents. And tell me if I'm wrong in understanding this, but a lot of the stormwater pipes we have underground that no one sees, you know, were built quite a long time ago and basically are intent to accommodate about five inches of rain in every 24-hour period of time. That's kind of sort of what they were built for. And so when we get like 10.4 inches of rain in, say, four hours, obviously, it overwhelms the system. Now, my question is, you know, that's probably correct, because that's the data I've been seeing go back and forth, which is a little bit concerning, especially given all the rain we seem to suddenly be having. Maybe climate change perhaps. And so the question is, apparently, the Public Works is going to be undertaking, or is undertaking some type of assessment or study that we might have next six or 12 months or so? And also, the attendant cost that would be associated with? Yeah, how do, if, you know, rain is changing and we're getting a lot more of it now, and the frequency more? Can you comment on what's going on there?
Yeah, it's a real, real difficult situation. And the summer has been horrible, beginning with May, there was a big storm in May, and it has not let up. I wrote a blog about it, and it really was trying to put some facts so people can understand. Because everybody, everybody, every community out there wants improvements, right? And with the history of the county developing, some infrastructure in the older sections is missing or not there, or was built to standards in the 50s and prior, or even in the 60s. So standards change over the course of time. We're not going to be able to rebuild the county drainage infrastructure in the next year, right? So every little complaint, we send people out. And people, you know, say, "I got flooded." Well, we try to assess, number one, whether it's something simple and it can be solved via maintenance. Number two, you know, do they have infrastructure? And when was it, you know, is it clogged or something like that? Number three, is it just due to the fact we had a huge storm? And that's what people don't like to hear, you know, they want improvements, you know, and they want incremental, small improvements because they think it's going to solve their problem. It's a really, really difficult thing right now. I mean, our budgets for storm drains have been, have not been huge over the course of time. So every complaint we look at, and some of those, we may need to do a broader study. But it's really small area by small area. So there's no comprehensive, you know, study that we're doing. But we have committed to do some studies, depending on the area in question and how many complaints come in. But even that's going to take time with the limited staff we have. So I just wanted to try to put some information out there. People need to be reasonable with what they're requesting of us. Once again, never hurts to ask. And I know you all are getting the same inquiries that we are. But and we tell them that there's a process. And once again, as a community, if they want to come in and lobby for new infrastructure, replacement infrastructure in their community, they can go through, you know, the citizen input meeting in the capital budget and work with people and try to get something out there, as has been done the last few years. But it is really, really a difficult issue when you have old infrastructure, and that's what we have in a lot of big parts of the county. So yeah, difficult problem, a difficult issue. And just to give you a brief example of situations that we're seeing, went in the field, one of your districts, some community residents walked me through the community, and some of my staff complained about all this damage that we didn't really see as you're walking it. And they complained about erosion, property damage, and home damage. They couldn't really show us anything. The guy at the bottom of the hill, the inlet was overwhelmed, water went right down his basement. Had the man had another step on his basement and grated around his house, he wouldn't have had the problem. So that's what happened to him. The poor guy got five, six feet of water in his basement from an overwhelmed storm drain at the bottom of the hill. But had the house been situated a little differently, or had he flood-proofed his house, had he thought about it, he wouldn't have had the problem. So that community's still lobbying for improvements. They have some improvements. There are communities out there with no storm drains at all. So, you know, it's a difficult thing for the government and the council to, when we go through the budget process, do you throw money at a community with some infrastructure? Or do you put it towards the communities with zero infrastructure? So that's my long-winded answer to the really tough question of how we handle drainage issues and drainage problems and complaints that we're getting now.
I would follow up on that, just saying, if you are putting together some studies, yeah, I'd love for the county council just to be briefed on kind of the progress made. I mean, and obviously, the areas that are being completely impacted by some of these rains, you know, close to Elkhorn City, obviously, right in a really, and I know Kathy's district gets pummeled big time. And it's like a brand-new world, suddenly, we woke up to. And now it'll be, obviously, we all know, and now we're about to get hit with another hurricane, hopefully, not too bad. And last thing, and I'm trying not to take up time because I know this is going to be a short work session, Mr. Chairman, was, you know, with the areas that really get disproportionately impacted, you know, with sewer overflows, like Academy Heights. And I know this is something the entire county has been consumed by. Obviously, I've been talking to County Executive Muller and Mr. Homan and yourself about, and I know it's something that we have to tread carefully on, but there was some type of arrangement with these laterals that go between a private, you know, private property ownership, obviously, and between the main connect and the house. Because I think that, I'm not an engineer, but every time I hear people that really know this topic a lot more than I do, it seems like that's part of the problem, too. Even if we replace a lot of pipe close to it, if the laterals are completely terracotta, they just like are worthless. It's creating a lot of issues. So it's just, I'd love to see some type of, something that we can do to help, recognizing it's a private property person's real ultimate responsibility. But if there's something we can do where areas are the most, most affected, I'd be really grateful to at least look at it.
Yeah, there's been some ongoing discussion. I'm not sure where it's going to end up, but the administration's been talking it over with us. My staff needs to put together some options for the administration to chew on and digest. Different places in the country do different things. But it certainly is a money issue.
Yeah, this is something we can look at in partnership with citizens, especially in areas like Academy Heights that just absolutely gets crushed every time there's a problem. And I think honestly, I really do think it's this laterals. I think that's part of the issue. So I appreciate it. Thank you, all of you, for your time.
Councilwoman Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Walsh, while you're here, I just wanted to say thank you personally. The White Marsh community experienced a foul odor this week. It seems to have come from the Honeycomb Reclamation Center. And after being notified on Friday, we know the county went out there very quickly, and we're back again on Monday. And that issue is being resolved today. So thank you for your quick response, and I've updated the community on what's being done today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Actually, it took a little while for us to track down the source of the odors, which was an interesting, interesting time.
And good luck this weekend.
Moving right along to page...
We still got, we still got snow removal?
Go ahead. I was going to talk about the snow.
That's all right. We have two more, two more snow removal contracts. One with HC Howland Sons Incorporated and one with Maryland Paving Incorporated. These are similar contracts that the council has seen in the past. They put under contract folks that we can bring in and help if we need them during snow emergencies. HC Howe will be providing three one-ton single axle dump trucks with plow and spreaders. And Maryland Paving will be supplying two seven cubic yard front-end loaders. And once again, we do this to get them under contract because we are fighting for resources during big storms.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Betts?
I just, I just received notification, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to mention, while you're sitting here, we've had very large trees in the Gumpowder River that have come down through the storm from two nights ago. And I notified Epps, and they were down this morning to pull them out of the river before it gets any worse and does severe damage. And then I was just notified that the county, you guys have already been down there and pulled the trees off the boat ramp and gotten rid of them. So gee whiz, you're quick, so thank you.
Next one, additional questions? Two more questions, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, all this weather is obviously impacting our resurfacing schedule. When, again, will all our resurfacing stop for this fall? About when?
Usually in late November. Really depends on ambient temperatures, so pave as long as we can.
Thanksgiving, around then, probably.
Around then.
Okay, thank you.
And last thing, too, I did want to acknowledge, Steve, you've been fantastic working together. And every time we come up with an issue, you've been incredibly responsive. So I really do want to acknowledge all your hard work and personal, like, involvement in a lot of these issues that are going on. I know when we had the flooding that happened in Oella and Cadenceville, I think I texted Steve 150 times, probably. So I really do appreciate it. And then the, also, thank you for your work on our October 18th public hearing coming up on, you know, what's going to happen with River Road and Thistle Road. I think it's going to be really important, so I appreciate your help and the executive's help in trying to get that together and really look at, you know, what's going to happen with, you know, roads that have millions and millions of dollars of, you know, cost effects. So I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Well, before we let you leave, Mr. Walsh, of course, I have to thank you and the administration for all the work you've done to get that bridge built in Woodlawn. It means an awful lot to the kids. And before, you know, guess why we were standing there? We saw our kids walk, even with school closed, on their way to school or to the library, so.
This entire county council is happy that that bridge has fallen.
It was a long time coming, but it worked out good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the kind words. I would like to acknowledge Glenn Keller, though. Glenn Keller's been our longtime chief of our sewer design group. So when we talk about consent decree, he was involved in negotiation three years prior to 2005. So he's been living with his consent decree and sleeping with his consent decree for a long time. And just want to acknowledge him because I lead a great bunch of folks in public work, so we need to thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to page 10. Director Barry Williams. Environmental Recovery Corporation of Maryland.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Chairman, council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Environmental Recovery Corporation of Maryland to provide portable toilet rental and servicing at various recreation and parks facilities throughout the county. The contract commenced April 1st, 2018, continues through September 30th, 2018. It may not exceed $25,000 unless approved by the council. If approved, the contract will continue through December 31st, 2019, and will automatically renew for four additional one-year periods, with the option to further extend the initial term or any renewal term in additional 90 days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial one-year and nine-month term. Compensation may not exceed $500,000 for the entire six-year term, including the renewal and extension periods.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mr. Williams. I'm just going to speak on behalf of every mother that has a toddler. I get a lot of complaints about the portable toilets at the parks because you have two, three, four, and five-year-old boys and girls that you don't want them to touch anything inside there. And it's very hard to get them to go to the bathroom in the scary box that stinks. So I'm just saying, when you can open up the comfort stations in the restrooms, it would be really nice, because it's really difficult to have toddlers use the portable toilets. But I'm sure you hear that all the time.
I understand.
Duly noted, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Barry Williams, next, we'll have Keith Dorsey, page 14.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. I have several items. First one, fiscal matter number seven, is a request for approval of a contract for investment and consulting services with a vendor, NEPC Incorporated. They are our current consultants, and they were selected out of other contracts on a bid. bid. The proposed contract is for an initial term of five years with two, with a two-year renewal and the possibility of a three-month extension at the end of any of those renewals. The total cost for the, what would be seven-year, three-month contract is estimated not to exceed $2.6 million.
Any questions? You're on the roll, Mr. Dorsey, page 18.
Fiscal matter eight is a request for approval of three on-call contracts for plumbing services with Denver-Elick Spears Mechanical and BMC Services. Denver-Elick and BMC Services are returning in terms of, from the previous contract. The Spears Mechanical is one that, where we have established tiers in terms of levels of jobs. Spears Mechanical would be the tier one, smaller contracts, and the other two would be doing larger work, more than $5,000 in terms of the cost for those projects. The total amount for the contracts, we have a contract for one year plus four one-year renewals, with the possibility of a 120-day extension at the end of any of those periods. The total estimated not-to-exceed amount is $4,342,000.
No questions? Keep going, Mr. Dorsey, keep going.
Okay. Fiscal matter number nine deals with temporary personnel services. It is a request for approval of six contracts that would be spread between areas of clerical, and that would be Goddenia, Premier, and Mary Craft contracts, temporary services for health and human services. That would be Goddenia, Premier, Abacus, and First Choice. And then the third category is skilled and unskilled labor. That would be Goddenia, Premier, and All-Pro. The county utilizes these services, it's not just off of the budget and finance, this would be any of the departments in the county, as they have needs arise regarding those categories of use. The contract is for one year, again, with four one-year renewals on those contracts. The estimated amount not to exceed would be $11 million.
No questions? Last, but certainly not least, National Research, Mr. Dorsey.
Okay, National Research is one where we are requesting approval for a contract. Right now, we have a purchase order for doing the survey under, within the $25,000 limit, but that would only reach in terms of a surveying of about 2,000 residents. What we want to do is to expand it to cover surveying 5,000 residents, as well as establish a website where citizens who may not have been selected in the survey process would also have an opportunity to go online and respond to the survey in terms of putting in their feedback. This is an effort that we're taking to try to provide better understanding in terms of the needs, the interests of our citizens. It allows for us to see how some of our departments are performing. It also provides, establishes benchmarks, allowing us to compare how we're doing with other localities around the country, and so we're asking for approval of this survey here.
Any questions?
I could, I could tell you, Mr. Dorsey, having a lot of knowledge about Anarundale County, I know Anarundale County, they did this survey every year, but it was done by the community college. I don't know what it costs, but the community college took it on. And I can tell you, before the survey even started, we have more need than we have money.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, agree.
Yes.
Very quickly, in 2009, a similar study was done, but the report was never written.
Was never published.
Published. And what, so what does that mean?
It means that, at that point in time, there was a draft version.
There wasn't what?
There was a draft version of a report, but it was determined at that time that the level of responses was less than what was desired for that survey, and so we never moved forward to actually issuing it.
Do you remember the cost?
I believe it was like $22,000 or $23,000.
Were the, I mean, no conclusions could be reached, looking at the results of the survey, or?
Well, in terms of, the administration at that point in time did not want to rely on that particular survey, but there was a report that was issued at that time, but it was written, but it was never issued.
I noticed that the report is due November 28th, 2018. What makes you think that the next administration would be interested in it, or see the validity of it?
Well, in terms of it would provide for them an opportunity to assess, one, unlike the community college survey, that often they don't have benchmarks across the nation to see, because, for instance, someone had asked, you know, sort of could ask the question, "How well is your, how do you feel the county is doing in the area of public safety?" And the answer could be 75% thinks it does well. Some would say, "Oh, that's kind of low," not unless you benchmark it against other localities, but the answer could have been 60. So, it helps in terms of, if the new administration coming in is going to have to make some tough decisions, it gives them at least some floor for being able to get some sense of where things are, and that the questions ask, "How well, if you, when was the last time you contacted the county agency? What kind of level of service did you receive? Were you happy with it? What kinds of concerns were expressed, did you have for that?" So, in terms of a new administration coming in, whichever one it is, it would be helpful in terms of setting budget priorities, it would be helpful in terms of having a third-party assessment of the level of services. It helps understand in terms of levels of recognition, in terms of initiatives that the county has undertaken. Do the citizens recognize that the program even exists? In terms of your recreational areas, which parks do they really use the most? And, you know, what did they find when they went there? Was it clean? Was it in great order? It's those kinds of things that are valuable insight to any administration coming in, but it allows, by the timing of it, allows them to get going and seeing what those needs are as soon as they come in the door, because they're going to have to face some issues as they prepare for the new budget coming up that will be due in April. So, it would help in terms of being able to at least provide it. Can they guarantee that they're going to use it? Can't guarantee that, but it'll be a tool that's out there available for them.
So, the administration that took office in 2010 did not want the '09 report completed and published?
It was still determined that that was not to be published.
Who determined it?
The administration determined.
The one coming in, or the 2009 administration?
We're talking about the 2009 administration made, and there was no change in terms of moving ahead. It was accepted that that report would not be published, and we left it at that.
Thank you. I guess the, Mr. Dorsey, I guess the question I would have is, why haven't we explored having a pop-up, so that when a constituent goes, or a citizen goes to the police department's page, which is outstanding, how they can rank, rate the services automatically? Or, I mean, it just seems like this is something we could have been doing over the past eight years, instead of paying this money to an outside surveyor.
In terms of the changes that we have in store, the current county executive is one very much committed to more transparency, and so there are things that we're looking at, but it would be, the true basis of what you're looking at is a very extensive project that really is something for the next administration coming in to consider. There are pages, of course, when citizens go to our website and make use of our services, there are responses they can make and give us feedback. That feedback is shared with departments on a bi-weekly basis, on the, whatever citizens write on our webpages and express a concern, but the webpage will about the services that they receive.
Any additional questions?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey. I might only add that seven of us are very in tune to every community there is in Baltimore County, talking to every constituent, just about everyone, on a regular basis, and we have a whole list of, we can tell you a lot about what's going on in Baltimore County. That's enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey.
Next, we will, we'll write along to page 21, Mr. Wally Lippincott, and this, by the way, I'm not sure if we have anyone signed up, but this will constitute a public hearing as required. Yes, sir?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the county council. The administration is requesting approval and ranking of the 13 applications for sale of development rights as part of the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation FY19 easement cycle. A public notice of the list of recommended applications was published in the Daily Record on August 21st, 2018, and also indicating, as you spoke, of the public hearing opportunity. Thirty-six easement applications were received and ranked by the county ag board, and they were ranked on the basis of soil size, contiguity to other preserve farms, agricultural capabilities, and environmental features, and price. The 13 easement applications before you represented the highest-ranked farms. They reflect some of the diversity of the county's ag industry, including dairy, grain, woodland, vineyards, and equine. And all farms are with the counties, within the county master plan designated agricultural preservation area. If you approve these, these easement applications will be forwarded to the state, where they'll be appraised and offers extended in late winter or early spring. One other note is, this is a return to an annual cycle. For the previous 10 or so years, it's been a two-year cycle, so this is the first annual cycle.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you. You've done an outstanding job for us, and this is a very worthwhile program. They're all in one council district?
Yes.
Or, how many others were in other council districts?
I can check. My recollection is there were two.
Just two?
Just two. I think one in the second, one in the fourth, but...
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Any public speakers? Okay, this will conclude our work session for today. Thanks for coming, and everybody have a safe trip home, and stay dry.